Hey, what's up? It's your boy DJ Elf Seven. As you know, I'm interviewing every single person running for office here in New York City. And I have one of the candidates right here with us. I'll let her introduce herself. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Tucker Pryor and I am running for city council for the forty-sixth council district. So I'm happy to be here today.
Where is that district forty-six?
Oh, the forty-six covers nine neighborhoods. That's Canarsie, Flatlands, Bergen Beach, Garrickson Beach, Mill Basin, Mill Island, Marine Park, Sheepshead Bay, and Mill Island.
Okay, so that sounds like a Brooklyn-Queens area, right?
Yeah, well, it's like South Brooklyn if that makes any sense. So close to Kings Plaza. Are you familiar with the mall?
Uh, sounds familiar, sounds familiar, yeah.
So we're just on the south side of Brooklyn, southeast. So it is close to Queens. We are right next to the Howard Beach.
Right after COVID, who knows, right? That was a long time.
No, 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 it's open. It's open. I actually just went to the mall.
Oh, wow, cool. Okay, congratulations.
They just reopened. They were closed for months, months on end.
I didn't know if they would survive, yeah.
Exactly.
Mall's everywhere dying.
It's the truth. It's the truth.
So, um, do you bring a certain, uh, you know, everybody has their own specialty, right? Yeah, what are you bringing to the, uh, to the whole game right here?
So the difference between me and those who are running, um, in my particular district is that I take action and I always have. I have been doing this work a very long time. I'm currently in my kids' rooms at District Guard Sonic the Hedgehog. But, um, I'm a worker bee, you know, and I, from the age of thirteen, I was scrubbing graffiti off the walls in Canarsie in order to keep our community, you know, bright and beautiful. Um, by the age of nineteen, I started my own nonprofit organization, helping young people graduate high school, go on to college, getting jobs, and getting off the streets, you know, and really showing them that there's hope and there's a way to do it. Um, and then moving from there, I actually, I graduated, I went off to college, I came back. And, um, after working for a few elected officials, I decided that I actually wanted to help one of the schools that I attended, which was I-68, Build-A-C. And the school was failing at the time. It was rated a D school and they were thinking of closing it down. And I started working there. Within the four years, we got the school to move up to a B school. We helped to decrease the violence that was happening in the school. Um, and I, and I was in the position as a parent coordinator. So it was really was direct contact with all parents, all students. And it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. And, and the staff, the staff is amazing. So it was really just to get them to see, um, that they're true champions, you know? I love, um, the fact that we, you know, educators, they, they really are our true champions, you know? Those teachers in those classrooms every day, my hat goes off to them. So I did everything I possibly could to support them, you know, and, and all the work that they do.
There may be some teachers out there that don't have the skills of the ones that were in place at, uh, where you were. What are some of the things that you saw that they did that were particularly effective or good? To help out the community, you know, because maybe there's other beginning teachers or teachers with different, what, what, what did you see working this instance?
So in this instance, you know what, um, the teachers just simply needed to continue doing was to continue to encourage each other, so working together. What I saw that worked well was when the teachers began to, um, overlap and overlay, like what was happening in English. They, and they had, um, a similar theme. So if their theme was about plans, let's say, they were writing about plans, uh, in English class, learning about it in science, uh, adding up different things, whatever, you know, worked out in math, however they did. But there were some, um, overlapping and synchronicities across, across the different, you know, the, the different, um, mediums. And that's what helped to actually bring the work alive. And that made a huge difference because we also then, myself and some of the other teachers volunteered to create something, um, uh, we, we called it like the Eco Club. And they were able, we were kind of transformed the school to planting, um, flowers that would help the ecosystem. And so the young people, we took them over to the Paddocket Club. We actually have a canoe club. Are you familiar with the Paddocket Club?
Um, not yet, but I'm super, already I'm super impressed with what I hear. I really like a lot of things that you've talked about so far. I can't wait to get more into it, but already kudos to what you've done so far.
Thank you.
I'm super impressed.
So I just, I, I just want to continue on that, but it's really just making the work come alive. So from the teachers working together collaboratively, to then even then bringing it to full focus by actually having the kids, um, do things that are physically, that they can touch, they can feel. So then they began to plant a garden. They learned about monarch butterflies and how they can, you know, help to be a part of the global atmosphere, you know, and the environment and to do things right. And what that looked like. And then we took them over, you know, so they learned what was going on on land, sea, and air. We took them over to, um, the canoe club, uh, which is also in Canarsie, along Jamaica Bay. And they were able to learn about what was growing in the water, in the sea, and how those things, you know, helped keep the water clean and keep our environment healthy and so on.
Like a museum exhibit type of thing?
Well, it was more like, I think they had like, they have different labs that they actually set up because they continue to...
Like a picture type thing, yeah.
Yeah, they continue to like test the water. So the canoe club itself, so where people can go canoeing, right? Right off of Jamaica Bay, right? Um, Seaview Park, right in that area. However, they can also learn about the actual water and the environment that surrounds us.
I've been looking for that. I heard about the canoe thing. I swear to you. I, I'm one of them hippies, yeah.
Listen, it's right here, right in District forty-six. You know, we're a gem. And nobody just don't, you know, people don't even know how wonderful this place is. And I love it. You know, it's almost like Wakanda over here, you know?
And COVID with the six feet's no problem in a canoe, you know what I mean?
No, that's right.
That's a nice little trip out there. Don't get lost, though. Wow, I almost got lost once. Holy crap, no.
Go out with someone who knows. Go out with someone.
Follow the trail. Don't go, oh, yeah. Let me see what's over there. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I agree.
No one's coming. No one's coming, okay? I'm sorry. No one's coming for you. Yeah, you gotta get your way out of there. Anyways, yeah.
Yes.
So look, let's get to the, um, some of the issues at hand here, right? Now, actually, one thing I was impressed because I saw on your website that you really talk about your real estate background, but we haven't even gotten to that yet, right?
No, right.
So what is this real estate thing that I see on your site? Well, what is that story there?
So in addition to all of what I'm doing, I mean, I'm also an entrepreneur by heart. So I did, I did start my own business called Prior Property. And so with that being said, so, um, I started to learn more or less about like the real estate industry and what's going on there. Um, but, you know, for me, I'm, a big part of my platform is economic vitality.
Wait, are you a sales agent or a broker?
I'm not, actually. I'm not, I'm not.
So what do you do? Is that your investment firm or property management?
I, yeah, property management for, you know, I purchase property, um, rent it out, you know, things of that sort. And so just building, you know, with, um, residual, residual income. And a big part of what I want to teach others in our community is that we can do this. We can build economic vitality for all. At every different level, there's something for someone. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, but it's just a matter of us people not being afraid to share information and really beginning to build from where we are, because everyone can do it.
Yeah, that's true. So I, I actually have, um, some, uh, other, I, I gotta think more about that. Yeah, that's actually, yeah, because there's the, a lot of real estate stuff, like, talk that goes on when we talk about, like, you know, this whole, like, race, you know? Especially housing, stuff like that, so.
Housing is very important and people, and housing stability. People are losing it. So that's why I said, when I say economic vitality for all, um, and even before going back to economic vitality, but, uh, when I really talk about winning together, that's my slogan, my campaign slogan. I believe we all can win together because your win is gonna look a little different than my win, you know? I may want to buy a house, but maybe a condo may work better for you or co-op. Either or away, it's still a win. You know what I mean? And it's one of those things like, and even if you want to live in NYCHA, public housing, I'm gonna hold NYCHA accountable. And that's, um, another part of my platform. We need to begin to hold the city agencies accountable and help them to manage properly. The issue that we're having here is that we have a lot of leaders that get into office. They may mean well, they have the intention. But the issue comes in is that they don't have the ability to manage. And so then what happens? They may want to do it, but are not, they don't have capacity to do it. And that's where that, that builds a whole nother level of frustration for on the part of the, the leader as well as on the part of the community, you know? And so that's the difference between me, you know?
Well, they've worked in that field for like twenty years, but now there's a new mayor saying that they want it done a different way and they'll be like, yeah, okay, whatever. You know what I mean? And the whole department might think like that and they have some issues, you know what I mean?
For sure. But then guess what? As a leader, you have to know how to be able to build those relationships and, and garner those, the, the resources. And it may not always look one way. I tell people all the time that we can have public and private partnerships. And having run a nonprofit organization simultaneously while, so my organization is based out of mega Everest College, right? So it's called Redemption. So Redemption Youth, I started at the age of nineteen, which I've mentioned before. So having run that organization, doing that simultaneously while working in government. So the, the same time, I graduated Adolpha University and I started running my nonprofit organization and working full-time for the government. And so doing this over the past fifteen-plus years, I'm well aware of the challenges that we face, but I'm also aware of the possible partnerships that can come together to actually help. So for instance, even just recently with the education system, the DOE fell short, I believe, in regards to getting the resources that the students needed. At this time, we should have been reaching out to, you know, Apple's, you know, Sprint, everyone, T-Mobile, Metro Plus. I, I don't care. The whole point is to build those gaps and those partnerships. We had young people who didn't have computers for days on end.
Yeah, one thing I just, uh, the computer thing is good. I have heard about that issue, yeah? But one thing that I just heard announced on the radio was that they said that the, I think that they're going to have some kind of summer program for kids that's free for them. Um, so that sounds like actually, uh, you know, that's gonna cost some money and stuff like that, so. I don't know what the, um, reception of that program is and how, how good the quality of that program will be.
I think that you brought up a good question. How good is the quality of the program going to be? For some people, you know, they may need it and that may work for them. But this is a time for me for the summer. I mean, my kids have been looking at the screen for so long. Are they going to now have them meet in person? I mean, they are gonna have to figure that out. For me, I'm sending my kids to camp. Why? They need socialization. I have young kids. I have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old. And these were crucial times for them. You know, being in first grade, it was time for him to learn how to read extensively, you know, really sounding out and breaking down words and all of those different things that I had to help guide him through. And he's been behind a computer. He goes to a charter school. He's been behind a computer for a year. So he hasn't gone back to school. So everyone needs to know the different needs that their child needs. I know my child needs some socialization, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
So...
So actually, yeah, I have a series of questions that I'm gonna ask that are just like, uh, that I ask all the candidates. So the thing is, I'm, I'm gonna start off with my partners over here. So the first one is, I work with a group that, uh, talks about freeing Assange. Would you be in support of freeing Assange?
What is that?
Uh, Julian Assange, he's the WikiLeaks guy. He actually published some information that was bad for the Republicans and was cheered as a hero. He published some information that was embarrassing to the military and the Democrats, and then he was banned as a traitor. And then he was locked up. And then he is locked up to this day. He was actually right, um, he's actually held in England. The US is trying to extradite him to the United States, but guess why? Britain did not release him to the United States, our ally. Guess what they said?
What did they say?
That US prisons are too inhumane.
Hmm.
Wow. Wow. It's bad. Yeah, this is just bad? That's sad. That's sad. You know what I mean? Wow, that's what our ally said. Wow.
Something. I don't know. You know what I mean?
They're calling it, you know what I mean? Well, that's our ally, right? They're saying it just like that.
They're saying it just like that.
It's not a proud moment. It's not a proud moment. You know what I mean? Okay, so anyways, Assange is actually, um, you know, kind of like a figurehead for the freedom of speech and access to information. Once again, um, if we take a look at like the Watergate scandal, right? There was people who got the tapes and then there was the New York Times who published the information. Remember that Julian Assange is not the one who stole the information or whatever. Yeah, I think, believe that Chelsea Manning, right? It was like the Watergate tapes were sent to New York Times and New York Times published it. That's what Assange did, right? He took the information that Chelsea Manning gave him and he published it. And now, that's why they're coming after him, you know what I mean? So, like, it's actually telling all the, even though he was quoted by New York Times and all this stuff, nobody else got in trouble, but they make an example out of him.
Got it, got it, got it. Well, you know, that is, that's definitely a cause. I could definitely stand behind. I understand, um, why, uh, he is important to, like you said, the movement and voicing your opinion because freedom of speech is freedom of speech. They shouldn't have, I don't, I don't understand what's the pretense by which they're jailing him.
Uh, they said that he's a threat to national security because, you know, um, he actually showed some, uh, there's something called double taps where on the film you could see that they were killing civilians. And that was very, that was contrary to, uh, United States military interests. So it's like the release of information like Guantanamo, things like that, right? It's very embarrassing for the United States military.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, so that's why, so they're, they're ashamed, ashamed of what he has posted. And, and I get it. So they're seeing that as a threat. However, I feel like there are other ways to go about doing it. Um, in regards to even speaking with them, because I think that yes, freedom of speech is important, but I also do think that, um, I think we do share a lot of stuff that maybe everything does not necessarily needs to be shared, right? And some things could hurt us, right? I'm talking about as a nation.
Yeah, that's fair.
Right? So when you think about, when you think about it in that regard, okay, I definitely don't want, um, something that could hurt us to, to the point of, you know, uh, breaching our security and giving too many people too much information because
We have to decide like what, yeah.
Our enemies, you know what I mean?
We have to decide. Yeah, we have to decide like where we draw the line, right? Like some people say, you know, like even though we're killing civilians, right, like we should be quiet, you know what I mean? So some people are gonna be okay with it, some people are not gonna be okay with that. There's different levels. It's okay.
Right.
Uh, but you know, there, you can find out more about, al- also just to mention another one offhand. What about Free Me a Boojamali? Ever heard of that one?
No, so these, so...
That's another renowned political prisoner. It's okay. We could look that up later, yeah?
I will, I will, definitely.
All right. Let's take a look, let's go on to another topic right here. Do you support UBI?
Yeah, well, I, I do think that is important for us to begin to move forward and, and I do support it. And really begin to think about the, you know, what that looks like on a universal scale, so that we can definitely, um, bring more sustainability to what we're doing now, you know? People are homeless, people are hurting. It's like, uh, you know, we can do better.
All right, so, yeah, that's, um, I guess, so you're overall in support. That's good to know. Let's talk about the disabled community because that's another community that I work with. Now, the thing is that right now, they're actually, uh, you know, the law says that you can pay them sub-minimum wage. But if we look at minimum wage, it's kind of like really hard to pay rent and just like pay for life in general. Would you support, right, the people who are, who with disabilities the right to receive minimum wage as well?
Of course. They should definitely be receiving minimum wage. Why are they getting sub-minimum wage?
Well, yeah, supposedly they're less productive or something, that's, yeah.
And that's the unfortunate part, you know? No, you're absolutely right. They're, they're not, their life isn't less valuable than my life because I don't have a disability. Um, just because they have a disability, that doesn't mean that the work that they do is less, they're less committed. They may be even more committed than some others, you know? I know some folks who go to work and they're not that committed, you know what I mean? Um, so I definitely, that is something that we should definitely push for and I would support that one thousand percent.
Appreciate you, yeah. Okay, another group that I work with sometimes is the trans community, yeah? And sometimes what happens is that these people, they will be, they're the, sometimes they get discriminated against a lot. And they end up becoming homeless, they become very like, you know, very, um, on, on the outskirts and marginalized. So the thing is that they go into public housing and then because of discrimination, they end up, even though there's no law that says discriminate against these people, right? They end up getting bounced out. So they're asking how they can access, right, gain, or how can they be appropriately served by the, you know, the city servicing? So how would you assure like, you know, minorities like that, that are, you know, having trouble accessing services? Um, that they can get them?
Sure. So for instance, I worked with, um, I, my last job was, I was the deputy director for community partnerships at the Manhattan DA's office. And a big issue that we had was that not just the trans and the LGBTQ community that are originally from New York. We have a lot of people who come from outside of New York. I don't know if you know, come to New York, um, for the possibility of being free. If that makes any sense, right? Because maybe wherever it is that they grew up, they weren't able to express themselves the way that they can here in New York City. So although I'm just, and I'm just throwing this out there, although we have, um, you know, our, our laws aren't necessarily supporting them as much, it is a space that will, that we still do support them where they can still, you know, we still have the pride, the gay pride parade and things of that sort. But now as far as really supporting them with their needs and services, we have to do better. So the DA's office, um, one of the things that we did to ensure that they were receiving the resources that they needed, we actually, um, when we had put out a bid, we ensured that they were going to serve the LGBT and trans community, right? And we wanted to ensure that they were providing these levels of services.
Hold up a second, yeah? Now, some of the viewers may not know what a bid is, right? You said you put out a bid. So just ignore the bid so people don't know.
Sorry, and it wasn't a bid. Let me, let me be correct. I, I, and I meant to correct myself on that. But it's a RFP. So the RFP, right, um, also dealt deals, we, we put out a RFP for trauma-informed services.
RFP standing for request for proposal.
Request for proposal, thank you.
I got you. Don't worry about it.
I apologize. So I, I was just correcting myself from the bid. It wasn't a bid, it was a RFP. So the district attorney had, um, received forfeiture funds. And so with the forfeit, forfeiture funds, then he's able to do what he feels is necessary for the community. And so one of the things that we assessed was that we needed to be able to provide more services, um, especially that were trauma-informed, the trauma-related, especially for the LGBTQ community, right?
That's cool.
And so that was one of the things that we did and we began to fund organizations like The Door. Are you familiar with The Door?
I am, from the Bronx, right?
Right, well, right. So they actually have a huge one in Manhattan.
Do they still have the Breakdance Program?
Well, and I think they ha, they have so many programs. I mean, like they were doing, I, and I, I'm proud to say that I went and it's a beautiful facility. They have, and that's maybe the one that was in the Bronx, but they have partnerships with all across the boroughs. But we supported the one that was in Manhattan. So the Man- Manhattan DA's office supported what was going on in Manhattan. And that was a big part of the services that they were providing to ensure that they were able to get, um, a lot of those young people off the streets now. Is it the, that is not the only way to do it, all right? So I just, I brought that up just to say that I, I, I lived it firsthand. I've seen it. I, you know, we went to The Door, we, you know, I saw their statistics. I saw the numbers that they were bringing in. But at the same time, a lot of the young people were still afraid, again, because not all the young people either are from New York or, um, they're just, they're untrust, untrusting, right? Of adults, of the situations and everything that they have been through. And so all those different trauma-related, a big part of, I believe that where we needed to start and what we needed to do is helping them heal internally from within. And so even with providing housing, um, and providing food, like helping them get on food stamps and things of that sort and getting them back into school. It was all those different resources. But I, you know, we also had to couple it with counseling. Um, because it, you know, they needed a lot more resources. It just wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't just this one thing that was needed in order to get them to become whole, right? So they can begin to live and build from where they are. And that's the kind of person that I am. I just want you to know. It's not about putting a Band-Aid on things.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not.
Let me initiate to you one proposal that was, uh, put up. Um, it's interesting, but it's also controversial for a little bit, right? So the thing is, let's say that there is one percent of the population is trans, just to throw out a number, yeah?
Okay.
And let's say that we can see from our, uh, or self-identification, whatever, that this can also be gained, but we see that only like, you know, point two percent of the, you know, housing is really going towards people who identify as trans. So you can see there's a shortage for some reason in servicing. So what we, we could do is we could take some housing and set aside specifically for trans people. Then you have people self-identifying as trans when they're not really trans to get into the housing, right? You also have the problem of, right, uh, maybe the person was trans, but then they have children who are not trans. And then it turns into like, you know, what was originally slated for one community ends up not becoming for that community, right?
Right.
And also, it's also could be conceived as discrimination or ghettoization of taking one group and sticking them into one place. Uh, you know, but then we can assure, right, if those numbers are off, right, like one percent versus point two, that's, it seems, that's one fit. That's pretty severe. So what do you think about a solution like that?
I do. I think, I do think that providing like specific housing for them, would it be helpful? It would, it would, honestly. But like I said, it's not just housing. I want you to understand that I, 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 I want to help them to build from where they are because housing is just one piece of it, right?
Right, yeah, just...
I would want to be able to, it would, it would be like a holistic center.
Yeah, access to any services. They discriminate, there's discrimination at all levels of service, but that's just one example, yeah?
Exactly.
So, cool. All right, so let's get to the, um, now I'm gonna get to some of the general questions that the people may have that I asked all the candidates. So one of them is like reopening, right? You have people like, when are the, they say, when is my life going back to normal? So if you are in city council, you're going to plan it so we go back to normal when?
Um, I mean, we're heading back to normal now. We're in that, we're on that path, you know? I think what needs to continue to happen, folks, regardless, one, you know, whether they ha, receive the vaccine or not, I think wearing the mask, I think we're gonna have to continue to wear a mask a little while longer. I don't think that this is something that's just gonna go away. Um, it's gonna take some time for, for us to begin to transition into what, what is quote-unquote "normal." Maybe where we, um, and which is what people are doing now. So even when you go back to work, depending on if you're not in a community space, like by the kitchenette or, you know, or one of those areas, you're by your desk or in your cube or whatever, you can take your mask off and things of that sort. And I think that we are gonna have to continue to take those measures. But are we heading back in the quote-unquote "normal"? I think we also need to rethink what normal looks like, you know?
I know, a lot of, uh, quite a few candidates have talked about like maybe even before this whole Johnson and Johnson thing happening. You know, they've been talking about, um, the, uh, mandatory vaccination, things like that, right? I don't know if that's really still on the number one list. Maybe, maybe not. But, um, what are your thoughts?
Some countries have it as mandatory.
What are your thoughts about that whole thing? People are concerned about it.
Mandatory vaccination. I don't, I don't think it should be mandatory, to be honest with you, because...
And people are also saying that they can't travel without it or they won't be able to do their job. So what level do you think that they will be allowed to enforce, right, uh, vaccination to participate in normal life?
Right. So at this particular juncture, they have already enforced it, right? So it's already been enforced that you can't travel. Or most jobs are saying if you want to continue working here, you're gonna get that vaccination. I'm gonna, you know, we don't have, so one, you know, because people have a right to say, you know, um, as far as like their companies and their business, they're saying if you're gonna work here, this is what they're mandating for their staff members.
I get that, okay.
Unfortunately, we don't, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a say for the businesses unless, unless the city council came together and said, you cannot mandate.
Yeah, exactly. We could pass a law or, you know, so...
That's what would have to happen. Passing a law saying not to mandate? Um, I don't know. You know why? Because I feel like if you are working at a company and they're making it mandate and you don't want to work there, then you work somewhere else.
I understand that.
You know, like it's not my company. You know what I mean? Like that's not, you know, and I wouldn't want to, I, 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 I wouldn't want to impose anything on any, anyone in that regard. So that's the reason why I'm not, I'm not for quote-unquote "mandating it for the world." But if a company says, this is, these are what we want to do, this is our law, our rule, like, this is...
There are also reasons that could have like enhanced features such as like, you know, working in public health or, you know, a type of like maybe, uh, you know, working with sensitive populations where you'd be extra careful or... So, yeah, I could see some reasons for that. So that's a fair answer. Um, I want to move on to, let's talk about the, um, uh, okay. We're talking about, uh, reform of education. Yeah, you work.
Yes.
What do you think about, uh, SHSAT, this type of thing?
I think that they should keep those specialized high schools. I love the idea of it. I do. And maybe it's, it's just me, but I think what it takes to, you know, I think that what's the difference? So I'm black, right? You can see that, right?
What do you think about making two more SHSAT, like, uh, specialized high schools in each borough?
Exactly. Why don't we just increase?
Why are we doing that?
Do you see what I'm saying to you? Because they did add one. So like the Latin School was just recently added and they added another one. I can't remember what, what the other two...
They could make ten of them. They're very highly, everybody wants them. Why would they just make a whole bunch of them?
I agree with you one hundred percent. I love the specialized high schools. I think that it's limiting, just limiting to, to three, at, at one point, with just three, right? Stuyvesant, Brooklyn, um, Bronx Science and Brooklyn Tech. Now, we can expand. We can have a couple more, you know what I mean? And of course Staten Island, they, they didn't have one, like throw a school out there, you know what I mean? Like you're saying. So it's that kind of stuff where I feel like they, you know, and the population has grown. Like in our district alone, you know, we're now over a hundred and sixty-five thousand people in my district with the nine neighborhoods that I mentioned to you. So, and we're growing in leaps and bounds in other places. That's why they keep building these astronomus, these very large buildings and getting people to move in, you know, that they're charging people our armpit leg to live in. But they, it doesn't have to be this way. And I try to get people to understand that. We need to begin to think outside the box. Expand our scope a little bit more.
Now what, yeah?
With doing that, we can then talk with the community, bring people in and get some voices, get some different opinions and really begin to say, okay, maybe this can work, that can work. And you know the situation too? I'm gonna be very honest with you. The DOE has a lot of wonderful, amazing people that they don't even tap into enough.
Yeah, so...
They don't.
Yeah, that's true. Well, you know, it's tough and any bureaucracy ends up causing waste of personnel, you know, it happens, yeah?
Yeah, they waste because they want to waste. It's not necessarily that they have to, you know? The DOE is a place that they can definitely, you know, do some skills training and see who's who, what's what. You know, begin to pull from the resources that they have. I think they waste a lot of money and waste a lot of time, to be honest with you.
Oh, well, yeah, so, um, let's talk about, um, the thing is that, um, this summer, right, yeah, there's been a lot of, uh, well, actually, let, let me just before I hop on, right? Because it is kind of tied to like police, uh, police stuff going... Police stuff going on, but the thing is, when we talk a look at the education right now, we just talked about it from like the classroom setting. But let me tell you something about how it's like twisted in other ways. Yeah, first of all, CUNY had become a cash cow, whereas before it used to be free. Now they're charging thousands of dollars to the tunes of ma- of collecting millions. And honestly, like it's creating jobs for people like Petraeus, right, which is like, I have actually on my channel. A video that shows that uh administrators went on, had their cell phones paid for and went on like, you know, fancy trips to like, you know, this water park. And ski ski resort and stuff, and they're still working to this day, you know what I mean? Nobody got fired, nobody, nothing, yeah. And I show you the books and everything, so that's crazy. Here's another thing that's crazy, right? Okay, so you heard about like um, the private companies buying up the public housing?
Yes.
Okay.
Turn it into into a private institution.
So do you know the name of some of those companies?
I don't know the name, but they're calling it the RAD program, so I am very much so familiar with the program and I and I and I and I too am at. Against it because even like with our unions, we have a lot of union based organizations here in New York. The unions could be working to fix up um NICA.
Well, check, check this out, check this out, right, yeah? Cause here's the tie to the education, right, yeah? So the thing is, right, they come, who's the number one landowner in New York City? It's NYU. And who just bought the Kip Bay Projects Cornell Pace? We've created these, we recreated these uh institutions charging us two thousand to twenty thousand dollars per semester, way overcharging.
Yes.
Making them tax free and creating financial giants that are oppressing us. That is cr- and it's being done through the educational system. Is that crazy or what?
I didn't know that. So NYU is the largest landowner?
And and New York City and who's buying the projects, it's Cornell Pace. What? Is that why we're paying all this tuition to create these financial monsters and bankrupting our own children? Way overpaying for an education that, what are they really getting with that education? Let's be real.
Find this information out. I was wondering who were, who was buying it, who was buying it out?
Remember that I'm interviewing everybody running for office, so if you wanna build a coalition. I can find you the people who are doing things similar to you because I've talked to them. You know, this is actually very good, yeah. So I built coalitions, I just had independent third party. Um coalition, we're actually planning on taking that to a national uh national stage, so that's gonna be pretty cool.
That is cool. Congratulations, you're doing awesome work. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Alright, Edley.
I'll be able to make this happen later on, yeah, so yeah, that's.
Let's make it happen. I'm about collaboration. Because there's numbers, you know, um there's unity in numbers and you know that already, and like I said, winning together. We all know what we're, what we wanna do and how we wanna do things, and I think if we really get together and bring, you know, like minded individuals. Anything is possible. We can launch into any direction.
So let's find out some more stuff. Actually, we might be having, um, I don't know if you heard of, I gotta look up the name again. Uh but there's actually one of the candidates who's running was the cop who actually called out the police for the quote, for the broken quota system. You know what I'm talking about?
That? No, who's the, who's the person?
Give me a second. I'm actually like inviting him, also my man Stephen Lee. To actually, oh my god, I can't, I'm not sharing my screen here, I, wait a second, okay. Okay, I recorded that. Luckily, we're not live, I guess. Okay, let's see, um. Please.
That's crazy.
Uh New York City, yeah, he's actually um, as I think taking the New York City to court, actually. Uh my man, yeah, so the thing is that we're planning on, uh also, these guys know a guy named um, what's his name, uh Serpico? You heard of Serpico?
Serpico, no.
No? There's a movie with the, with the um Al Pacino that talks about Serpico, he's a cop who caused police reforms in New York City.
Ah, yeah, no, I might have to look this stuff up. Become more abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, it's all good, it's all good. Alright, so these guys, right, yeah, we're gonna try to arrange a police reform, right? Because the thing is that a lot of people, they wanna, you know, I have to be, admit that I have a lot of uh. You know, sympathies for the police, okay, because the thing is that, right? Um the people who try to make policy have never been police themselves. So, the thing is that, right, there's a lot of like weird, like, you've seen that movie Robocop two? When Robocop like has to follow all those weird directives and it just like breaks down and can't do nothing, yeah? Unfortunately, that's kinda like how a lot of cops feel right now, you know what I mean? They're like, they have like. I've taught like, you know, not that I'm an expert, but I taught some holds and stuff like that, right, yeah? They're not supposed to grab anything on the torso. So if you grab just the arm, you can whip the shoulder up, you know what I mean? And you can start to like whip the arm free and you have all this torque and stuff created. It's, I feel like it's a less safe situation, you know, I mean, not more safe. Right? And then the person can rock their head up off the thing and then bang their head back, you know what I mean? That's, I feel like that's like, if you control, right, the, right, I understand the concern. But if you control that right, they can only move so much, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, who's making these rules?
But and I agree with you. I mean, when people are talking about, oh, um defund the police, I was like, defunding the police is not the answer. So what needs to happen is that us as a community, we need to get get together because there's a disconnect. You understand what I'm saying? There's a disconnect between what's happening with the police force uh and and what's happening in the community. And until we begin to connect and relate as humans, then what, we're gonna continue to be like us and them. And it's gonna continue pointing that finger, and that's not gonna help us.
So what's your plan for police reform?
So for me, it's one, new training that involves the community, being a part of the conversation and the community being able to understand what the police are doing. Because at the end of the day, they're there to protect us, and I love the fact that they are there to protect us. I want them to continue protecting us. What I don't want them doing is some of like, I don't know if you saw Eric Adams had put out this video, he's also running for mayor. He had put out this video of showing what's good policing and bad policing. So there's some things, it's the way they're being trained and maybe are not being trained or what they didn't get enough training on. We need to retrain them. That's, that's just one, just like what you're saying, instead of them grabbing or, you know, they're told shoot to kill sometimes. It, then that's what they're gonna do, and you know, or or maybe that racial profiling, that was something that was put into play by Bloomberg, you know what I mean? Like where they began to execute on the, like, just like you said, whatever laws were given to them and and so then, then. New rules, they they just continue to abide by what they're being told. So it's one of those kinda things that we as a people, as a community, like we need to be able to come up, you know, with some standards. That we want, and then seeing how they can uphold those standards. But still helping to protect us at the same time, because even in the new reform, right, having worked in the DA's office. I worked in the Brooklyn DA and the Manhattan DA's office. With the new reforms that came in, they're also threatening to regular civilians. So one where, you know, a person can just be detained, they're just gonna get a um a DTI. And they're just gonna be detained, but then they can continue to go back and rob the same store over and over and over again.
What's DTI?
Uh detained, what is it? Oh my god, I can't even remember. Um I only left there in November and I can't even remember what DTI is. But it's where, it it's just like a desk appearance ticket, so you're not being, you're arrested to stop you in the moment from doing what you were doing. Let's say you just like, you robbed the Dwayne Reed, right? You took, you took out two sodas, I don't know, some monster drinks or something. You understand what I'm saying? They will, they will detain you for um, you know, for quite some time and then uh, but they have to release you. So they aren't arresting you, you're not going to Central Brooklyn, you're not, you're not being reprimanded fully. They're just being detained as like a holding space, right? Because they were saying that they were arresting too many people.
Yeah, okay.
And so then the advocates came out, and that's what I'm saying, I think sometimes the advocates, don't get me wrong, I said, you know, sometimes they go. They go the extra mile, go so far that they want all these changes, but they're not really looking at the aftermath of of what they're asking for. So now you just have folks like going in and then that's, this is also helping to increase crime. It's not just because of COVID why crime is.
A lot of times, they're not even from the community, that's the killer.
And they don't even realize and understand the implications of these actions. So do you understand what I'm saying?
I agree with that, I agree with that.
But at the same time, I don't want the police killing, you know, um young, you know, Tim, you understand what I'm saying?
I've been, I've been fighting for that in my own organizations as well, yeah.
And and so that's why, that's why we need to, we need to actually begin to communicate and have real solid, concrete conversation. Where we can connect to each other as humans. It's not about you wearing your blue.
What do you do, yeah? What do you do when you try to have a conversation with the police but they aren't listening?
Well, I think that you have to set up the right setting. Everything doesn't happen, it's hard to have a conversation with the police when they're working, they're in work mode. And they're standing outside of a building, protecting a building, and then you have some people down there when they have to be vigilant and be aware of what's going on. And some people is down here saying, my F the police. So they, some people shouting F the police, some people over there, and some people trying to have this normal conversation. That's hard, bro, you know, like, we have to set the stage to have those conversations. I'm gonna be honest with you.
I have to, you you know, honestly, there was a day where actually, the way that the police treated me, had me saying fuck the police, you know what I mean?
I hear you.
The thing is that, right, this is, check this out, right? Someone ordered a check out of my account for three thousand dollars. I called the bank, they say, yo, go to the police station, file the report. I go to the police station, right, yeah, I walked there myself, I'm not riding no car. I tried to file the report, they're like, now you gotta go to the bank, you know what I mean? So, and get the thing and then come back. So I do that, right? Then they say, no, we can't do that again. They say, go back to the bank and get the evidence. I said, what? Yeah, dead ass, yeah? But then I bring back, okay, so then, right, they say the evidence they can't read, I bring it back, then they say they can't read the evidence, they say to go and get the original. But the original, right, the document, the bank doesn't keep the original or got processed, who knows where. You know, I mean, they don't have the original. I asked the bank, they don't have the original, so I go back to the thing, and then the cops refuse to take a report. I'm on the phone with them, I brought the phone with the bank representative, the cops write down like, yo, check it out, the fu- they're not writing the report, how am I gonna get my three Gs? They say this happens commonly, that's what they told me from the bank. They said like because they got overwhelmed with crap, so they just, like you said before, they don't wanna report, they wanna make up, you know, I mean, certain quotas and rules. Right, yeah, so, oh, the crime's going down, look at how effective a leader he is, wow. It's really not, it's really not more effective, okay, yeah?
It's not, a- and and that's what I'm saying, so the crimes going down, that, you know, it's.
The thanks to me, by the way, thank god, yeah, but the.
And listen, and and into you, that right now is under high. No, it's true, I mean, I, and this is what I tell people all the time. Another reason why I'm running is because I too have been duped by our city agencies. You have stories, I I could tell you a couple, I don't, I only have one, I have, I have several. And so these are the type of things that I'm saying in regards to, that's what your elected official is supposed to do. Hold those city agencies accountable, and I wanna sit on the operations, um the government operations, um agency operations, um committee. Because those are the people that's supposed to say, you know what, let's look at this agency, let's see how they're operating. If they need to get some tweaking, some reorganizing, that's what the city council is supposed to do. Hold those people accountable. And until we have real leaders that can have some integrity, right? Which is what I stand for and go in and be fair. You said fear so many times in my conversation with you. I am not the most perfect person, but I do believe I'm fair. And fair enough to know that you have the, there, there, there are three sides to a story, right? And so bringing all the different sides together takes time, and it's gonna take time to actually work through something to actually begin to implement. Solid, sustainable fixing, you know, solutions. It's not just gonna happen overnight, and I want people to be, to really be able to understand that, because sometimes people think like, Tiffany, you know what? This is lofty, it can't happen. I said, oh, no, I'm sorry, I've worked for DOE, I've worked for ACS. I've worked for the Brooklyn DA, the Manhattan DA, I've worked for um, Char, uh what do you call it? Ke- Kevin Parker, uh Matthew Eugene, I've worked in all these different arenas. And so I've seen how it, how it's done and what could be done differently, and I've seen it work.
It sounds like to me like you have a plan that you're ready to roll out, so.
I do.
The first days you're in office, how does this plan really kind of like, how does this plan get started to get set up here?
So for me, the plan, well, well, a big part of what's gonna be different with my, with with me, I actually want to go out, I'm gonna have a field team. So the difference with me is that I'm not just gonna be sitting in my office waiting for somebody to come on down. You understand what I'm saying? Which I don't believe that that's how the elected should be. I'm actually going to have a team where we're going to actually calibrate. How long is it gonna take us to see if we can knock on every single family door that lives in my district? And we're gonna say, how are you? What are your needs? How can we lead and guide you? We're not gonna be able to solve everyone's problem, but if we knock on the door. And we see somebody without food and without, you know, are about to lose their home, at least we can have some information for them, some steps that they can take. Because a lot of times people feel overwhelmed, they don't know where to go, they don't know what to do. That's a big rea- a big part of it as to why um parents give up on young people, right? They don't understand their their child, they can't get it together, they feel alone. You know, you have a lot of single parents out there, and so with that being said, then their kid hits the streets.
Okay.
And now becomes a juvenile delinquent.
It's cool that you actually have um more experience than the average candidate who's running, which is very cool. Um so, uh maybe in your series of products, are there some product, you're probably some products you were more proud of or maybe accomplished more? Maybe what's the best one, or, you know, was there a best one?
Oh my god, not a best one. I've done some amazing work and I've been, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with some amazing people, so. Um, what's some of my best work? You know, I'm so proud of of just the people I've worked with. Uh you know, I'm gonna give you something so we can move past this, but um, you know, I wanna go back to, I'm gonna go back to I S sixty-eight, go back to build the seat, like. That was some of, that was, it was, it was some good work. You know, you know, working with people who wanted more but who just didn't know how to get it. You know, I was able to actually work with families because at that day and age, times were changing. We have a lot of Caribbean based people here, right? So a lot of immigrants, and not just Caribbean, but you know, folks from all, 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 all over. My, my mom is Jamaican and my dad's Guyanese.
Oh, cool, okay, alright.
Thank you.
That's a good combination, I like that, yeah?
Thank you.
Two cool people right there, yeah, I like that.
I appreciate that. Um but let's say for, in my district, we have an increased um Yemen population, right? Um Arabic speaking and an increased Creole speaking population from Hait- from Haiti. And so you had folks coming in and not really being able to understand their kids who are now. Draw, you know, like deep diving into this culture that they weren't able to really understand. So I took it upon myself to work with the parents, to talk to the parents about really understanding, getting them some help, computer based help. And so we had a series of free programming and classes for day and night, so parents could come into the school, utilize the computers. I showed them how to use it, and then also too, I brought in the Brooklyn DA's office, cause that's where I used to work before going to um I S sixty-eight. But brought in the Brooklyn DA's office to talk with the parents about cyber crimes and all these different things that they can look out for. So they were able to have a conversation with their kids and what that looked like. And that within itself changed the dynamic of the relationship between the child and the parent. And they were able to really begin to blossom, cause communication is key, right?
Yeah.
And a lot of parents, a lot of the kids knew that their parents only maybe spoke one language or they were, you know, they they didn't speak English as well, they spoke broken English. So the kids were getting over on them, so you not have to school the parents, you know what I mean? So, because kids have a lot of information, but they don't necessarily know what to do with it, you know, and they were getting themselves, they were, and this is a middle school.
Well, I looked at something kind of earlier where you said that, you know, they built actually the curriculum around like a, like a fixed, like, you know, idea, so like. The plants would be like, you know, during science class and history, maybe history of plants, and then, you know, maybe the math, like, you know, studying like how the math works with the plants and stuff, so. I like that one, yeah?
And so there was a, you know, there were, there were so many different things that happened over the four years of being there, but what I can say is that. Um I really, I I would say that that was some, some of our best work and the principal was open to actually, because he just wanted to help. And he didn't know how to help, so when he said Tiffany, come on board, because I had done some work with him through my organization. Um you know, the school was.
Get some metrics so we could really place like a little bit more precision with that particular measurement, so. How many people, thousands maybe, or I don't know.
Oh, yeah, so, so like I mentioned before, so the school at the time had over five hundred students. And so we're talking about students, but students who were being involved in gangs. The school at the time was rated a D school, so from the four years of working with them, they went from a D to a B. We almost made it to an A, but of course, we still had some kinks to work out while I was there, but within four years, we were still able to jump up, right? So we increased our grade, we increased our um our popularity with the parents, we increased uh, you know, and visibility and communication with them.
Now, what I like, okay, what I like about you is you're a business owner, you you talk the, you know, you've done other things, which is very cool. So a business owner, right, listens to and says, you know what? She got lucky. She she said that she had some good teachers around her, sometimes you have a good team, right, yeah, so. Maybe you got lucky to to extent, right, but how is it, right, is it luck or is it maybe a little something more?
Uh, it's desire, it's tenacity, it's tenacity. Just like everyone else, I just want, I want you to know, just like everyone else, I too face, um you know, um adversity. Constantly. I I grew up in a single parent household, right? So my mom, you know, being a single mom, working hard, doing everything that she had to do, but what she taught me is to go get, go get what's available to me. And reach for as much as I possibly can go and get, and don't stop until I get where I wanna be. And that's it. So that one, you know, and she taught me about faith, having faith. I am, I am very faithful, God, I love, you know? So I'm also grounded in who I am and in my faith, I'm gonna be honest. And and I'm grateful for that because my mother given me that solid foundation, she's a pastor, you know, and she's given me that solid foundation that helped me. To, to say, you know what happened? Today is a bad day, like on my son's wall, I have here happy day. You gotta go to sleep, you wake up tomorrow, tomorrow's a new day. If God bless you with breath, and and you know, then you try again tomorrow. Today may have ended crappy, okay, but you keep trying, you know, you keep on going, and so, yeah, being positive and all that, that's, that's important to me. How I continue to, it's it's my tenacity. I continue to thrive in that way because regardless of of the opposition. And it, you know, it's, it's not gonna faze me, I'm gonna continue to move forward. So I don't wanna hear it.
One of the big, uh, factors that also the city takes care of is housing, department of buildings, also does construction permits, zoning, things like that. And the real estate, I know your real estate background, what are your thoughts on, you know, some of the issues that are going on with real estate in New York City? The developers' money and and the game plays a huge role in this race.
And I apologize for cutting you off. I apologize. I'm, I'm excited, I'm gonna calm down. Because I already thought about it. The problem, a big part of the issue is that in our district, in all these districts, they wait for the developer to tell them what they want. We should already be doing a land assessment and assessing what our needs are in the district and what we need, where we need it. No one should come in and tell you what they gonna do. What you gonna do here? You don't live here. You don't, you you understand what I'm saying? So don't tell me what you're gonna do, you can ask me what you would like to do and it should be more of that kind of process. Instead of them, they just go down, they get the zoning, they get, they get all the stats or whatever it is that they need. And then they begin to build and do whatever it is that they wanna do. The only time that they consult like the community board is if they're gonna go out of zone or they're gonna go like, if this is a R three, which is the height. Of what a house can be or whatever in in my district and they wanna go to a R six, then they have to contact the community board if they want to do something outside of that, right? But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that. We should be able to say, knowing that we've done an assessment. So every year, there should be an assessment across everyone's district. Whoever is managing that district, you should know what your district has and what your district needs. So for instance, in my district, because we're going in leaps and bounds, we need more schools. So the last school was built five years ago. Um, it was a charter school that was built behind Kings Plaza. No one even knows about it. And you, you know, and so even with them getting up there, um, and trying to increase. Their level of, um, visibility, so people will know that these are other options available to you. We need to be able to do those type of things because and and more parks and more clean spaces. And you know, like, these are the type of things that I wanna see in my district. But again, you have to have a vision for these things, right? I grew up in this district, so I knew what it once was and what it looked like before what it is now. And I want it to go back to, um, and not even to go back, but I want it to be. Something better than what it is. It's a good place to live, but why can't it be great? Why can't it be outstanding, phenomenal? That's what I want.
Um, alright, uh, do you, uh. We can see that the economy is shifting a lot and there is a possibility that many people move out or away from New York City. Since the jobs may be going virtual, uh, there may be advantages to living in the city, there may be disadvantages to living in the city. Um, I talked to some people and they say they worried that the city may return to a period like the eighties. When there's just a higher level of crime and, you know, just poverty around just because of the recent events and people losing their jobs and stuff. So what's your answer to, uh, you know, what's your projection or how will your leadership maybe, you know, soften the blow or, you know, take care of that type of, uh. Economic, you know, maybe misdirection of of what's, you know, going on here?
So a big part of my platform as well as, um, helping to develop small businesses, so that like I said, um, economic vitality for all. That means really just seeing the shift of money flow economics, right? Where are people going, how people are shopping, really begin to look at the data. What's, you know, and what's happening and then begin to boost, you know, our resources and push our energy in those directions. So for instance, in this district, I don't know about everywhere else, but when people left their house, they were left to go to, um, a synagogue, church, a religious institution, right? Or they left their homes to go to their favorite store, restaurant, something of that sort. That's why people left. Really, they even left to go see friends and family. I just want you to know, like, they really left, like, the only reason that, how they were spending their money, so in that way. And so when you think about that, we need to begin to support the small businesses, just like we did the big businesses. You know what was sad? They allowed stores like Target and BJ's and all these stores to stay open, not to say I didn't shop in them, I did. But however, I was sad when I couldn't go to my favorite restaurant, when I found out that it was, it it's now closed because. They were told that they could no longer have patrons and they needed that money.
But Domino's was open.
So the big chains, all of them were able to stay open, they got to do everything that they want to do, but what about the small business? You you know what I mean? Like, you know, I, you know, I put on all this weight, not that, you know, but I was, you know, I was, I had just signed up for a gym, I'm ready to go to Harbor Fitness. They were told they couldn't, they can open. They just were allowed to reopen because they're a small gym, they want it, you know, but all these little things, you know, so the small businesses were. Heavily, heavily impacted and it was unfair because people put their life, blood, sweat, tears into their businesses.
It's definitely super rigged, yeah? Talking about that, are you running as an independent or are you running as a Democrat?
I am running on the Democratic ticket.
Okay, that's cool. Right now, you know that the, um, the Greens and the Independents and the, uh, the Libertarians, they have to get more signatures. Uh, than, you know, than others that is, that's not really fair. Yeah, you guys only have to get like one point five, they have to get like, uh, two point five, yeah? So since you guys usually get double, they, you guys usually get three percent, they have to get five percent. They're actually suing the board of elections on that particular issue, so. Yeah, if you could support them and there's, you think that it should be fair for them too? You think they should only have to get. Uh, the same number as the Democrats and the Republicans?
You know, that's interesting. I'm assuming that they're doing that, why? Well, because they don't have to run a primary?
There's some things that are. No, because remember, they're all running independents, so they're all in their own parties. You get what I mean? If like, let's suppose example, like, like Green Party or, you know, Libertarian Party, those are existing parties that may have competition for spots, but. You know, most of the time, these parties actually, sometimes Green Parties considered to be horizontal leadership. So you can have multiple people running for president from the same party at the same time. Yeah, because the thing is that.
You're really teaching me a lot today. I just want you to know, you are knowledgeable. I like that.
I've been in the game for a long time, yeah, and also like by interfacing with all the candidates, I learn very fast. You get what I mean? So I'm in all the spots. I also am part of a lot of political movements, so I'm always dipping my hand everywhere.
Alright, that's excellent, though.
Thank you so much. Hey, but you know, I want people to find out about your campaign, you're super cool, I wanna do more stuff with you, we got, uh. Like I said, that Serpico, right? Look that up, yeah, he's very interesting, yeah. I actually have a video on my channel with Stephen Lee, it shows like a little clip from the movie, yeah, with Al Pacino. Yeah, um, let's get to the thing, so let's show your website, let's show your contact information.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So my website is W W W dot Tiffanypryor dot com, that's T I F F A N Y. P R Y O R dot com. In addition to my. No, you're right, I wish, I wish that guy, I wish I knew him. My social media, all my social media is, it's Win With Tiffany. So that's W I N W I T H T I F F A N Y, Win With Tiffany. That's all social media.
That's cool. Alright, you need any help with, uh, all your ballot petitions all done? You got all that, and that's a lot of work.
That petition thing was. You know, but we made it happen. You know why? Because they don't allow the candidates to carry their petition. How do they do with the independents? They allow them to carry their petition? Or they have to have volunteers?
Um, I'm not really, I didn't, I didn't really find out yet, yeah?
So that might be, and so maybe even that might be different. So the difference is that, so, well, I know for a fact that the Democrats could not carry their petition. You had to get someone who was a Democrat to carry your petition. You couldn't carry, and also too, what I thought was unfair, only if you were Democrat, you could you sign my Democratic petition. But they couldn't because they weren't Democratic, you know, it's like, come on. And then also then it looks like I'm, uh, you know, ostracizing myself from them, when that's not the case. I was just told that this, this is the process and the procedure that I have to live by.
You know, actually, that's interesting because that's funny that they think that they can tell us what to do, because guess what? Because we can play the same game back on them. So the thing is that, right? Yeah, check this out, okay? So the thing is that the DNC nationally, they wanna pass the little rules that say. You can't participate in, in these debates unless we have permitted blah, blah, blah. Guess what? Locally, we can pass laws that say. You wanna blackout football games, cause can't fill the stadium, guess what? If you shut off the third parties, if you shut off, right, like people who are running independent Democrats and versus establishment. If you do not give us equal speaking time in the primaries, right, if you not give me a fair chance. You are not allowed to run, to run anywhere on the web or on anything, you are shut down. Yeah, we'll play too.
Look at you, that's right.
We're coming, we're, we're done with the games, we could play right back, whatever you do, obviously, could do it right back, you know what I mean? Yeah.
I hear you. Look at that, look at that. What got you in the, in, and sorry, you don't have to answer this, cause it's your show, but. What made you start, what, what made you so interested?
Right, let it take a bullet, right, went to Indonesia. You know what I mean? And a native Ameri- a a s- a person indigenous to these lands is treated in that way. I can't believe it, it's just amazing, no way. Yeah, so that did ramp it up. The more I see people getting stepped on, the harder I go, so.
Excellent. I like that, I like that hard, that passion. That's what we need more of, to be honest with you.
Honestly, I doubt it. Actually, I've been in leadership position before, to me, it's like a trap. You know, uh, because the thing is that, right? Um, sometimes it's harder to like to stay grounded. I guess that's why you have people that you can trust, but. Everybody, you're the boss, so everybody smiles when you're around, you know what I mean? She's watching, you know what I mean? Stuff like that, you know what I mean? Yeah, so.
That's why you gotta hold people accountable. That, give them work that you can, you know.
Fudging the work, so they're there like always hiding and trying to cast their mask and you always have to like break through and look, yeah. Unrecognizing just to see and fix everything and no title, just fix, yeah.
But management is key, management is key.
Yeah, we're also networking for candidates for the, um, for the House of Representatives race. If you don't win this one, right, yeah? The thing is that redistricting will change all, so and there's gonna be no incumbents and there will be some seat losses, so. We'll see if we can make some action happen, we'll continue, like I said, it was going national right after this, so. Some of the upcoming, uh, we're gonna have some, uh, discussions and panels. Like the Chris Crowe should be coming up soon, so I'll be in contact soon, alright?
Alright, again, check me out, Tiffanypryor dot com. I appreciate you, Ed Lee. Thank you. Have a good one.
It's a dark day in our nation when high level authorities. Will seek to use every method to silence dissent. The truth must be told.
And if you want the truth, you need to check out independent media producers just like myself, DJ L seven. You should subscribe and hit the bell icon to get notifications when I release a new video. Twitter, Instagram, and of course YouTube. Unfortunately, we have definitely seen that these mainstream outlets will cave to corporate interests, so we encourage you to join our independently moderated communities of Reddit and Discord. We also encourage you to subscribe to us on Bitshoot daily motion, so you can see the content that YouTube doesn't want us to let you see. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video. That's right. It's time for us to tell you about the Taking Action Group. Do you need an activist or maybe there's no activists around willing to help with your cause and you need to learn to become an activist? That's exactly why we're here. Every week, we get it with people from across the nation, in fact, even sometimes internationally. And we develop strategies and a game plan to address the issues that are affecting all of us. Every week, myself from New York City and of course, my co-host Lisa from Los Angeles provide a coast to coast perspective on what's going on in the country. If you want to donate to help out with expenses, travel, equipment, you know, stuff like that, then I definitely appreciate it and you could hit us off. At Venmo or PayPal. Thanks a lot. Hey, by the way, we also have a merch store, so check it out. Oh, my goodness, it seems like you've reached the end of the video, so make sure you check out some of our other videos, uh, make sure you subscribe. This is your last chance to do so, so thanks a lot and looking forward to seeing you on the next one. Hope you guys enjoyed. Please comment below if you have any questions or issues you'd like me to address. And if you're an activist, the time to make things happen is now.